Supervisor Zigamire?
Here.
Supervisor Baines?
Present.
Supervisor Stevens?
Here.
Okay, if I could ask the audience, please rise. We're going to begin with an invocation from Pastor Peter Park from First United Methodist Church, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Richard Dosher.
Let us pray. He has told you, O mortal, what is good and what does the Lord require of you but to do justice and to love kindness and to walk humbly with your God, God of the universe and God of grace, love, justice, and peace. We gather together to discuss, decide, and do the important works of our city that we dearly love and cherish. We give you thanks not only for calling us and placing us here, but also giving us responsibility to make our lives and each other's lives better. Help us not to take this opportunity lightly, but to embrace this privilege with gratitude and humility so that whatever we say and do, we may edify one another and build up the loving and caring community here in Uba City. But when we look outside, when we turn on TV or turn to Internet or social media, we often encounter hate, slander, and violence toward those who think differently, believe differently, each speak very closely differently. In this ever increasingly polarized society, remind us of what you desire, what you want from us, that is to do justice, love kindness, and walk humbly with our God. We all have different backgrounds, some grew up in different cultures, and we live in different neighborhoods and worship and pray differently. But once again, we are here because we love our city, we love our community, and we love our country, and we value our invaluable rights granted by the divine Creator, that is life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Therefore, imbue in us the spirit of freedom and responsibility, inspire our thoughts and hearts, enlighten our minds to be visionaries, to seek and advance the well-being of our families and our neighbors. As we come and open this meeting, we pray this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you. May be seated. Yep, we'll start, actually, we're gonna have a presentation. I guess we're not seated.
Will Richard Dosher please join the Board up front for a presentation of a plaque in honor of your years of service with the Sutter County Planning Commission?
Okay. Hi, Richard. This is a presentation from the Board of Supervisors. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors wishes to extend you the most sincere appreciation of your many years of service to the Sutter County Planning Commission. And I just want to add a sincere personal thank you to you because it was over 10 years ago, I think we're at 11 years ago that you and I talked about you being on the Planning Commission, and you faithfully served for that amount of time. I will tell you, I want to tell the audience that Mr. Dosher has served like just givingly the whole time he's been there. He serves fairly. He does, him and I never talk about items up front. We've never had a conversation once about what's coming up on the Planning Commission, or maybe, maybe once we did. But, you know, over 11 years, he's been independent in his thinking and just, it's just really proud of how you've, how you've handled it. So I want to sincerely say thank you to you. Do you have a few words to go on, Secher?
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity, members of the Board for your support. Neil's out there someplace that always helps me on our Wednesday nights, and all the county staff that's here the nights that we meet, IT and the support staff and whatnot. It makes it run so smoothly, and it's a pleasure to be able to serve the members of the county with the support that we have. Thank you very much.
Chief, before you leave the room, I want to add one more thing. If we could just give a round of applause to your lovely wife for putting up with your volunteering all of this time. So, our friend Kate Dosher. So, thank you. I appreciate you. Okay, now we're moving on to the next item on the agenda. Before public comment, I would like to make a motion to table item 22 of the agenda.
Second, the motion.
Okay. Can we have a roll call vote, please? Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Boone? Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Zigamire?
Before I vote on this, I want to speak on a few issues on this. It's not so much the raise and so forth, but a few weeks ago, this pay raise was brought before by the grand jury, just like other things that the grand juries brought before. This was not something that the supervisors asked, hey, bring this pay raise forward. So, this was one of three steps. And the reason I, why myself, and I'm sure most of my colleagues voted yes on this, because it allowed us the next few weeks to dive into this more, get some community response, and look at our own budget. Over those last two weeks, the posts that have put out there, the attacking posts have been absolutely incredible. Some of the posts are, you don't do anything for the county, you don't do enough, this is a part-time job. I want to assure you, if done correctly, this is anything but a part-time job. I serve on 18 committees, all right? 18. Now, I'm also a volunteer youth coach and a 4-H leader, and I serve on many other boards, along with my colleagues as well. I always have my phone on, even when I was at Disneyland the last three days. I would average between five and 10 phone calls a day, because that's what I wanted in a supervisor. I want a supervisor that's gonna answer his phone when I call him, and I have a question, and he doesn't know it, at least he'll find out what that answer is. We get calls throughout the evening, throughout the day. Last week, I was lucky, or two weeks ago, I was at the World Ag Expo and I'm thankful for the Tulare County Ag Commission Office to allow me to participate in the meeting there in their office. While at the World Ag Expo, I was able to visit with other manufacturing companies that are from Sutter County and to see how things are going, because like I said, being a supervisor, we wear a lot of hats, and it's nice to get out and see what's going on. Even if we are four hours away from home, we still represent the county wherever we're at, regardless if we're here. So, having the schedule that we have means we miss a lot of stuff. We miss a lot of volleyball games, baseball games, and so forth, but that's what we signed up for, that's what we ran for, because our intention was to help better this community. Once again, I've never once not taken a phone call, or when a meeting is asked, never been to that meeting. Yesterday, I had a clear schedule, but I had three meetings that I was called upon by constituents yesterday morning, made it back to my shop, and got to spend a few hours there yesterday, and every day this week, I'll spend a few hours there the rest of the week. I'm very fortunate to work for the company that I work for that allows me that time to answer my phone or to get away when a constituent needs something. It's very lucky. I'm not retired. I own one home. I don't own a vacation home. I'm not a wealthy individual. I work hard what I do, and I love being a supervisor. I absolutely love serving. But what I believe moving forward with Sutter County, first of all, I think in order for electeds to really do and really consider pay raises, I believe it should go back to the people and have a people's group that comes together and figures out what those raises should be for all electeds. Matter of fact, I want to bring it before staff, because we do have provisions for some electeds in the county to where they make at least 10% or 15% above their subordinate. I want to do away with that. I want to get back to where all electeds are on the same, not pay schedule, because that's not gonna be there, but have a group of citizens decide while looking at the budget and working with the paperwork that is there that they need, and help decide what that raise should be. You tell me what I'm worth, all right? Because I'm never gonna give you less than 110%, and I don't expect my colleagues to do the same. We're always gonna be there, no matter what, whether it's 11:30 at night, because you're calling because there's an issue, or 1:30 in the morning because you're calling me to complain about a party that's going on, and I said, I'll call dispatch for you. That happens all the time. But like I said, that's what I signed up for, and that's how I'm programmed, is to, if you call me, I'm gonna try to get you a solution and find out what's going on. But, there's a lot of other great things that as a supervisor that we work on that you don't get to see. And one of those things are, is while down at one of our CSAC conferences a few months ago, I was able to meet up with a company called Unified Fleet Services, which has the chance, the potential to save Sutter County over $1 million a year in our vehicles, in our heavy equipment. That's $1 million a year, but it doesn't stop there. I also met at World Ag Expo with a culvert specialist that comes in and fixes culverts from the inside out, concrete lining. This is something that we have, I think, over 1,200 culverts in this county that we have to get repaired. And they're very costly culverts, so we're always constantly working with FEMA and trying to get the approval of those and long inundated permits from the state. But like I said, this is all positive stuff, because this has a chance to save us hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars. Working with anything from, going from paper towels in all our buildings to going to air dryers with HEPA filters, that alone can save us $15,000 a year. But every bit counts, every bit, all right? We have a budget book that's online and in a book. In six years, I've been asked to hand-deliver that budget book for someone to look through that budget book, and it is a public knowledge, that book, and we implore you to ask for it or go online to look for it, because maybe you have an idea that we don't have into looking, where there might be some cost savings. But the one thing I am proud of over my six years is my record on voting for public safety, and along with my colleagues here. Public safety has always been our number-one priority, and if you look through a budget, you can see it's right there. Nothing else but public safety, and it's always gonna be like that with the way our community is built. We're also working on community development along Highway 20. In my district, I'm working with two developers right now for possibly seven retail locations that could bring almost $1 million in tax benefits to our county. This is huge, and this is stuff that we have to push through in order to get successfully through this. But we are crunching the numbers. Like I said, I don't pay raise, I'm not worried about that. You know, you elected us, you're right. As elected officials, we knew what we were getting into, into this, and we serve at the will of you, so I believe all electeds should let the people decide what we're worth. You know, but I implore you to serve alongside us in the committees and the volunteer organizations that we serve in. Come out and give us a hand, and when you get on Facebook, just message me and say, hey, do you have time to come up and meet, because this is really bothering me over something, and I'll be happy to come meet with you. But I apologize, I don't like to debate on Facebook, but so just please reach out, be happy to meet with you. I'm gonna vote along with my colleagues right here to table it. Like I said, I want to thank each and every one of you that who did reach out and say, you know what, we support you guys and the job that you're doing, and that means the world to us. But like I said, look at everything that's put in, and we're here to help you and serve you, and nothing more. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Zigamire?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Can I make a comment? Okay, thank you, Mike, for those comments. Two weeks ago, when we had our first vote, these four individuals beside me made a vote. They made a vote to fix a problem. We do have a problem in this county. When you go down and look at everybody else and what they're making, Mike mentioned CSAC. You know, I talked to one group that made 180, one supervisor that made 180,000 and had four people assistance to help them. We have, we have an issue in this county. Every county around us is way above us. But going back to my issue right now is, I know we have to make cuts. Everybody on this board knows we have to make cuts, and, you know, I don't want to go out there and say, okay, we're gonna raise and, and, but we're gonna be having to make these cuts. I spent all day yesterday sick at my stomach, because I know what's coming in July if we don't find solutions. We have, we have cut and cut and cut, and people have told, we've been told as a public that, you know, these, these problems are gonna come, and we've had grants that have made us whole, and we're not getting those grants now. The state has dried up, feds have dried up. I'm trying every way to find money, but there's gonna be, having to be made some really tough choices coming up. And how do we go out, this is just my feeling, I'm speaking for myself, how do we go out and tell you that we're gonna have to make some really hard choices and cuts if we've just given ourselves a raise? I love what these guys, they tried to fix a problem. I understand that. I don't know each one's motivation, but it was to fix a problem. I, I'm gonna try to fix that problem, but it's gotta be in a different manner for me. It's gotta be incremental, it's gotta be over time, but the problem needs fixed. So, if you don't hear from these guys, I'll bring it forward here in the future, but it needs to be fixed. It's not fair. Thank you.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Supervisors. The ayes have it.
To the Chair, please.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, Steve, could you give us a quick update on our budget, please?
Just in general, I mean, the...
Well, I mean, where we, where we stand today, are we upside down, or are we looking good?
Well, thus far in the fiscal year, we are looking pretty good as far as Sutter County is concerned. Over the past several years, the Board has passed very prudent fiscal policies, even throughout our very difficult years here. We have, over the past, say, five to six years, increased our reserves from around $1 million to around $7 or $8 million. We have made many cuts, as I've mentioned before, but it bears repeating, because when I speak, people, probably just drones on, and they don't really hear it. But we have the second-least employees per capita of counties in California with under 200,000, which is about 30 counties. On top of that, we have a 15% to 20% vacancy rate. I will say that all the employees are working hard, but I, I want to especially point out that the managers, for the most part, when we're short-staffed, they end up making up a lot of the time for things, and I do think we're at the point where operations aren't as efficient as they could be because we have too few people. There is a saying, doing more with less, but at some point, you do less with less, and you, you've all seen, just from my department alone, when you come in at 8:00 at night and we're still in there, regardless. That isn't a complaint, but as far as this year, the cuts we made the last couple of years have made a difference, and so this year, rolling forward into '24, '25, it looks a bit better than last year. I can't say that that confidently yet, because we have several financial transactions to make. So, I think it's looking a little better, but after we get the May revise from the state, because we know there are a lot of cuts there, we're anticipating different impacts from the federal changes, which could be very negative towards beneficiaries in Sutter County, whether that's through social services or other programs, or even grant programs. So, it's a little difficult to say, but as far as general fund, I think we're looking a little bit better than we were last year.
Thank you, Steve. I really appreciate that. That's our CAO, Steve Smith, and I'd like to give him a round of applause, because I've been staying late to 8:00 at night. In fact, he asked me if I was keeping his hours or something, because he's in there all the time, and I've been staying there, and I just want to thank, I really, really appreciate the service he's been giving us. He's there in the morning first thing, and he's, if he's not last, I'm last. Sometimes we fight to see who goes out the door last, so that's just the way it's been. We're working our backs, I mean, we're working hard for you guys, I want you to know. And we've got, I was, I have a good friend that's the top in the USDA Loans and Grant Department. They brought down five of the top people from California, and we brought all the department heads in, and we were able to plug into a few programs. Some are, are hanging out there. I just want you to know that, that they're in motion, and there, some are in exploratory, some are moving forward. I want you to know that there are solutions, and we're gonna find them, no matter what. If it takes me to stay till midnight at night, I will, but I will find them for you. But thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Boone. Two other changes to the agenda for today. First of all, there will be no closed session, so if we'll remove the closed session, and also, we will be pulling item 20. So now we're moving on to the public comment. Members of the public will be allowed to address the Board on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. State law provides that no discussion or action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Okay, and then we'll move to any public comments.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have two public comments.
Okay.
The first speaker is Apura Josse.
Hi, welcome. Yeah, it's right there. Thank you.
All right, are we on here?
Yeah, you're on. Go for it.
Thank you for your time, first of all. I'm here to discuss the off-leash dog park, which as we know is going to be shuttered, because Caltrans is increasing the lease quite dramatically for a nonprofit, and I understand this body has nothing to do with that. But I was hoping that you would be able to advocate for us with Caltrans to perhaps change the lease, or give us a month-to-month, or anything like that, because it really is an important community thing that is rare. There's not a lot of off-leash dog parks in the area, and not only is it good for the health of the dogs, healthy dogs give healthy communities, because they're calmer in the neighborhoods, but it's better for human beings, too. And on a very personal level, I'm bipolar, and my dog is like my, you know, kind of therapy dog, and he gets me out of the house to the dog park. And so every day, I get the socialization that he gets with his little friends, and I have our, our little group. In light of your discussion on budget, it would seem ridiculous to ask the city to make a city dog park, but that would, that would be optimal. So, yeah, that's really it. Just hoping that if it comes across your desk in any way, if you could try to find a way to grease the wheels in our benefit, that'd be fantastic. So, thank you.
Appreciate your comments, and if you would reach out to a staff member, we'll follow up with you.
All right, thank you so much. I really appreciate your time.
All right, thank you.
Our next public speaker is Tony Farley.
Walton High Park, Tony Farley, the Sheriff of Two Stars, the cripple, the cripple was the elastic man right there, and Manny Carlos, Manny Manny, and Zachary Hamble, and Tia Alexander, the fire chief, and Lil W Cadet right there, right there, and the Marines, who brought Marine guy, Marine Corps guy, and the heroic lawyer, heroic lawyer versus villain doctor, and Professor Steve Smith, electric car professor, right there, and Jeff Boone, the midnight, the midnight supervisor, and Carmen Baines, the baddest guy ever, and Dan Forrest, Jackass Capitol, man, of Marysville, yeah? That's what I'm saying. I call, I call, I actually call Marysville Little Sacramento, Marysville Sacramento, and, and, and Stephen Farmhouse, Jeff Stevens, the punk pie in March. And Mike Zigamire, your speech is very awesome. I support you. As supervisor, as supervisor, you make, we make, you make. Don't fall for it. The state simply makes 30 to 40 grand. That's, that's, that's decent, but don't raise, don't raise the bill higher. Keep it at a minimum. So, I support you, Zigamire, your speech, speech is very inspiring. I support you, Zigamire, for your speech. And Sarah, Emma Rios, thank Sarah for her service, and so, so, so as, so as Tia Hessel, the, Tia Hessel, the, the, the California lady, and, and Dr. Liu, Dr. Liu, and Jamie, and Millennial, thank you, Millennial. Thank you for your service. Also, don't forget Sacramento Bee guy, Macy's in Sacramento Bee, right there, and Caltrans Neo, thank you for your service. Yeah.
Okay, thank you for your comments, and we have one more speaker, Elizabeth Robinson. Can you turn on the microphone?
Okay, good afternoon. I was, my name's Elizabeth Robinson. I taught school for 34 years. I'm retired now, and I got my first dog when I was eight. Now, then went to two, and now I have four. And when I was working, I took them to the dog park after school and on the weekends. Now, I'm retired, so we go in the morning, and I was not aware until I came here that, about budgets and stuff like that. I've only been to a meeting that really, was related to schools, and so this is all very new information, so just like the previous comment, I don't really expect any, I mean, I'm not here to, to expect anyone to be able to, or the city to be able to help at all, but I just thought I wanted to express my support for the dog park. And if anyone missed last week's paper, I brought it, because one of my dogs made the front page. This is Gucci, and then the other dog, well, I have four, but my oldest is, was at the bottom, and this is Buddy. He's 13.
Awesome.
Anyway, and I have to say, the reporter that wrote the article did a wonderful job when she said park closure would be a loss for dogs and owners, because it's wonderful to come in the morning, to walk and see the dogs socialize, and it's just been really a positive part of my life, and I think of other people that also come. So.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that very much. You have a famous dog now, too. That's even great. Now, moving on to the consent calendar. Are there any comments on consent?
To the Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move to consent calendar, items 1 through 18, removing item 14.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Excuse me, the consent calendar is items 1 through 16.
Oh, 1 through 16.
1 through 16, removing 14. Sorry about that.
1 through 16, removing 14 for discussion.
Yes.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Zigamire?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, if we can have the HR Director. If you could kindly review item 14 with us, and then we'll open it up for discussion with the Board.
Yeah, good afternoon, Board of the Chairman of the Board and Supervisors, Veronica Baumgartner, HR Director. So today, we have before you a court decision that had came down in 2019 that established minimum minimum wage for salaried exempt employees, and that threshold has went up this year to $68,640 per year for our non-hourly, right, our exempt salaried employees. So when we did a review of this, we did find that there was 26 individuals in a number of classifications that were under that threshold, so they were not making enough, you know, as compared to that law. So here we, today, we are in front of you, asking that you approve an increase with, in regards to the law for these salaried employees. There was 26 individuals impacted or 26 allocated positions. Three, or I'm sorry, two were actually supervisory positions, and we are asking that they also get that raised to keep that 5% compaction between a manager and their subordinate. So those two were essentially already making above, but if we are to raise their subordinates, then we have compactions, issues there for those two positions. Yeah, so I'm here to answer any questions.
To the chair?
Yes. Supervisor Baines?
So just how I understand this, there's just a couple people that have been impacted, but what is the financial impact that that'll have on our budget?
Thank you, sorry for that. The appropriations will be increased 126,000. Of this, 89,136 are funded through state and federal sources. The remaining 36,874 will impact the general fund. Currently, the affected cost centers have sufficient budget appropriations for this year, so no budget amendments are necessary, and then we will, of course, budget accordingly for the future years.
Thank you. Okay. Any further questions from the board? Any further discussion? Okay, then I call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, eyes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the public hearing. We'll open, actually, we have Neil Hayes going to present.
Public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution updating the rules and regulations for the Sutter County Airport pursuant to Sutter County Ordinance Code, Section 1200-010, and adoption of a resolution revising the charges for the Sutter County Airport.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. So this matter is just an update to the existing airport rules, which are part of the county's ordinance code. They were last updated in 2011. As you may be aware, the airport is operated by the Sutter Butch Regional Aviation Association through a 10-year agreement with the county that your board recently approved and kind of re-upped. So in conversations with them, I attend the monthly meetings of their organization. They wanted to introduce some changes and kind of updates to the rules. The primary change, if you've kind of looked through the document, and I can maybe scroll through it because we did track changes. So this is the, the primary change in the document is that, in the document, it defines the airport manager, and so this change authorizes the SABRA, or members of SABRA, to operate in the airport manager behalf. The primary reason to this, if you're to read through the full document, is that they have some tenants that are behind on payment of their rent, and so they want to be able to enforce essentially the laws of the state in order to be able to kind of recoup the unpaid rent from tenants and kind of encourage them to remain current. Otherwise, there are some other minor changes and clarifications as to the gates and how they're operated at the airport. There's a gate that's at the north end that primarily just stays closed, and then there's a main business gate at the main entry into the airport. And so we were looking to clarify how that would be operated. Finally, the only other part is setting of charges. So every year, the SABRA does a survey of the rents of the relative hangar rates and even the tie-down rates for the airport, and so we wanted to update them. Your board is the only authorized entity to set those rates, and so this would become an annual kind of resolution in order to update the fees at the airport. I can scroll to that attachment. It's essentially about a 2.5% increase, which is in line with inflation, per the agreement with, between the county and the SABRA. It's indexed to an inflationary mark that we measure every year. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you, Neil. We're going to actually open it up for public hearing. Do we have any comments on this? Okay. Well, we're going to close the public hearing and then bring it back to the board for discussion. Any questions, comments, motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, eyes have it. Thank you, Neil. Appreciate it. Okay, then now we're going to move on to item 18, and Neil stays up, and we have, if you.
Public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution revising the fee schedules for the Development Services Department to include fees for the Building Division Fire Marshal inspections effective April 1, 2025.
Yes, so with this matter, previously, Chief Shalowitz, the Fire Services Manager, provided the role of Fire Chief and Fire Marshal in the county. With his retirement, the county has Fire Chief services but needed Fire Marshal services. So my department hired an extra help, retired annuitant, to perform those services a couple days a week. Consequently, my department did not have the fee schedule set by resolution to be able to seek reimbursement for the services that we provide. So utilizing the staff labor rates that are prepared by my department and then reviewed by the auditor controller every year, we took into account the typical types of hours that are included in the fee schedule, which is, if we scroll. So essentially, there are a number of state mandated inspections that need to be provided and performed on various facilities throughout the county, in addition to the typical types of maybe inspections that are incurred for building inspections, both commercial and residential. I think it's everyone's aware now, new residential homes require fire sprinklers to be installed. Quite often in the county, that is based upon, is serviced by a well, a water well. So that water well has to have a certain amount of gallons per minute and a certain amount of pressure that can sustain the system during its operation. And so our retired annuitant, his name is Jim Matthews, we went through all of the types of inspections that need to be done, allocated the amount of staff hours that would be allocated, and then utilized, like I say, the fee or the rate that has been approved previously by the auditor's office. So with that, we provided the table that's included in your staff report. Should you approve it today, then we would incorporate that into our building permit software so that we could bill for the services that he provides to our county. Some of these facilities, you should be aware, are also located within the city of Yuba City, but the county has jurisdiction to provide some of these inspections. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you, Neil. I'm going to open up public hearing. Do we have any cards? Okay, close of public hearing, bring back to the board.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Neil. Appreciate it.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I think we're very lucky to have Jim Matthews with us come out and help us out, you know, with his years of experience, especially being from here. It's a big deal. I mean, I know this has taken some time to get through this, but you and Pete are really helping us catch up here in our fire department, so we appreciate what you guys have done so far. Thanks for helping us out. Thank you.
Can we give him a round of applause to you, actually? We appreciate your help, Jim. Although we didn't recognize each other because it's been so long, but that's okay. Thank you for your help, Jim. Okay, we have appearance items, and today we have Marnie Sanders, the Executive Director from Yuba Sutter Blue Zones.
Adoption of a resolution recognizing the Yuba Sutter Food Policy Council as a valuable organization in promoting access to healthy, fresh foods for all community members.
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. Thanks for the opportunity to come speak to you today. I am here to discuss our Food Policy Council. So as you all know, our region that we get to call home is a rich agricultural community. We have many farmers with global markets. We have a lot of small farmers here producing wine grapes, produce, dairy. We're just really rich in diversity, and there's a lot of skills and tradition that come to bear in, in this community to create this vibrant food farm economy here in Yuba Sutter. Our community possesses many attributes that embody a strong and vibrant food system, such as infrastructure like cold storage, processing facilities, distribution networks. We also have a few farmers' markets. We could, we could use a few more. We have food trucks and locally owned businesses that showcase a lot of our local produce and really just highlighting, again, that rich culture that we have in the community. But there's still room for improvement to really enhance our effectiveness and build a stronger and more sustainable food system for the Yuba Sutter community. And wouldn't it be great if we could see more of our locally grown produce in our schools and other institutions like our hospitals, and to see more of those locally grown products in our restaurants and our grocery stores? And that is part of why this Food Policy Council has been created and why Blue Zones has been part of it, because we're here to help bridge this gap and create a healthier and stronger community and more well-being in our community. So in June of 2023, we brought together a group of passionate community members to address this food systems work. Over the course of the last 18 months, this group has met to develop the strategic plan, the mission and the vision. This work was facilitated by a national food policy, food systems expert. She's worked in hundreds of communities across the nation. So we were really led with this expertise, along with a committee or a council of folks that are really knowledgeable and skillful. We have some of them in the room today. And so with all of that input, we were able to create this strategic plan. And so we can go ahead and move, oh, I'm sorry. There we go. Just to share with you our mission and our vision. Together, we grow a resilient, nourishing, and equitable food system for Yuba Sutter, and our vision is delicious food, healthy people, a vibrant local food and agricultural, okay, community. All right. And these are our strategic priorities. We want to grow our local food supply chain, build healthy food skills, ensure a sustainable infrastructure for the Policy Council, and bolster, bolster food and rescue and recovery, and then access to affordable and healthy food. So again, with growing our local food supply chain, it's making that connection between our growers and our, and our eaters, and bringing more of those commodities into our grocery stores, our restaurants, our, and other, and institutions. Building healthy food skills, this is about educating our community members on growing, preparing, and preserving their own foods. And this process can empower our community members with the knowledge and hands-on experiences they need to maybe cultivate their own gardens and creating access for themselves to these healthier and fresher produce. And overall, this is going to contribute to our community's own self-sufficiency and access to health and better well-being. And then ensuring a sustainable infrastructure, this is creating a solid operational foundation with the Food Policy Council, and then bolstering food and rescue recovery. This has been a long conversation for quite a while. You know, we're working alongside our partners. The Yuba Sutter Food Bank is really taking the lead on this effort, and we really want to give them all of the accolades for the work that they're doing, but we want to come alongside them and really help to leverage the work that they're doing. And then increasing, increasing access to affordable and healthy foods. I mean, this is something that we have a lot of organizations in our community. Again, our food bank, our, our food pantries, and other organizations that are addressing food insecurity in our communities. And we all know that we were feeling it in the grocery stores, increasing bills, and it's really having a deep impact on many people in the community, and it's having a deep impact on our food bank as well because the need is greater and greater. So again, the work that we want to accomplish with the Food Policy Council is really to come alongside our, our partners and, and to help them to achieve their goals and bring more access to affordable and healthy foods. So we are now in the process of moving into our action planning. In fact, we have another council meeting tomorrow where we're, we're developing action items for each of these strategic priorities. And I don't know if you can see this, but these are our council members, and I will leave, can I just leave these with you? I just have a few copies of the strategic plan. If you want to take a look at that at your leisure later, you're welcome to. And I would certainly invite a supervisor to serve on the council if they, if they would like to. We'd love to have you. But we have representation from nonprofits, health organizations, public health, and then, of course, our farmers. So as I wrap up, I just want to emphasize again our vision for our food system in Yuba Sutter. We, the Food Policy Council endeavors to build a sustainable food system where our locally grown produce becomes the cornerstone of our schools, institutions, grocery stores, and our restaurants. We envision a community where there are farmers' markets, and they have, and they're accessible, and they're affordable for all. We imagine a community where individuals are empowered to eat healthier and able to grow their own foods, and they have, they're empowered with those healthy food skills. We imagine a community where the fresh vegetables that students are eating on their lunch tray and the fruits that are in the hospital cafeteria are, and the ingredients in our dishes and our local restaurants are all from just a few miles away. So, and this isn't just about the convenience, it's really about creating that community that can thrive together. So, and with that, I'll just, I'll cut it short. I know I'm kind of going a little long, but I just, we wanted to come in front of the board today and just to request your support of the Food Policy Council and acknowledge its impact and its ability to really amplify the work that's already being done in this community in many beautiful ways. But again, we just want to come alongside and leverage some of the great work that's already being done. So that is it for my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great presentation. Thank you, Marnie. First of all, do we have any public comment on this issue? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the board for any questions or comments.
So I, to the chair?
Yes.
I just want to thank you for the presentation, Marnie, and interested in serving on that council, maybe we could talk offline.
Great. Wonderful. Would love to have you, Carm. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, then a call for a motion for support.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, eyes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to continued support, and great job, Blue Zones. Okay, we're now going to move on to, where are we at here? Item 21?
Adoption of a resolution adopting the 2025 Improvement Standards, thereby replacing all previously adopted improvement standards.
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. So this matter is an update to my department's improvement standards that date back to 1999 is when most of the details were originally created. There was an update in January of 2006, and then the current version now. Now, a lot of this came about because of the Lakeside at Sutter Point development. That project is utilizing what would be considered more of urban design standards because of curves, gutters, sidewalks, all of the utility infrastructure that's going in place, as well as the landscaping, the sound walls, the streetlights. So with that, we enlisted the services of our Plan Check Consultant to develop the specifications and the plans so that we could help future phases of the development within the Sutter Point specific plan be more consistent. As well, we've included in our details, which have been online for about six months, and they've been circulated with all of the local engineering firms. We received no substantial comments. But it will allow development that occurs in the rural part of the county to utilize existing grassy swales, drainage ditches, because that's the type of infrastructure that we have in those areas, especially when we're having the type of infill development. So it'd be unreasonable to expect curb, gutter, sidewalk, and, you know, that just raises the cost of development and can make it challenges. It also creates a lot more drainage runoff that the county then has to address. So with that, we brought this matter before your board in order to have a resolution adopted so that we could begin to implement these standards on new development as it goes through the county. They are quite substantial, and, you know, they're essentially a new set of standards that we will be, I expect, will come before your board on regular intervals to provide updates, changes, revisions that we want to kind of enhance, or feedback they receive. The specifications that are included with the plans have a provision that there can be variances either at the director level or through your board. So that's, you know, something as a way that if we find that, you know, the standards are too onerous or maybe don't fit a circumstance, then we can look at those on a case-by-case basis. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Through the chair. Yes. Move to approve staff's recommendation.
Okay. We have an open discussion. Go ahead. Supervisor Stevens?
Neil, as you know, I was at the committee meeting where you brought this forward. And as I thought about it, you showed us the book of the way it was, our existing book now, and the new book is like the old book is this way, and the new book is like this way. My concern is, are we making it too difficult to develop in Sutter County? And I want to be friendly, and, you know, maybe it just spells out the codes better. I don't know. I'd like to get your feedback on this. Is it something that is going to be difficult for the new developers to live up to?
So actually, our intent with these standards is to provide more clarity and make it much actually simpler for landowners, developers, to even contractors to know what they need to do. So currently, we have about 86 pages of details. We're going to about 225 pages. So that seems like a whole lot. But part of that reason is that our current standards incorporate what's needed maybe for development out in the rural part of the county. But they do not include what needs to be done if you're putting in a brand-new subdivision. And what we don't want to have happen is, and there's a potential for this, is that after the Lakeside development or as Lakeside gets going, another developer came in and they said, "We want to start building," they could go and pick a different curb, gutter, and sidewalk. And they could pick different streetlights. And they could propose all kinds of different things. And so we wouldn't have the continuity that, from a public works infrastructure standpoint, maintenance, operations is going to be very helpful if we have a lot of consistency. That's what's going to be most efficient from -- we're going to collect fees from the development and then also for our staff to provide those services. And like I say, I mean, there is a provision that, you know, we will revisit and look at the standards, and people can bring them up. But as far as, like I say, rural development, the infill type of development, it doesn't really change, you know, some of those things. It does help clarify, for example, in the storm drain section, it clarifies the design storms so that the amount of runoff that's generated from a piece of property that gets impervious area, whether it's rooftops or paving or concrete, then that is more in line with how the county's existing storm drain system is sized.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes. Go ahead.
Yeah. Hi, Neil. With respect to your design, is this going to, is something that's going to affect the new area, South Sutter Point?
Most definitely. This is going to create consistency of the development at South Sutter Point. So, you know, the current project is intended to be 3,900 units over a period of time. The actual build-out of the specific plan is 17,500. And so this is going to provide for the streets, the curves, the gutters, the sidewalk, the streetlights, the sound walls, the landscaping to look a lot more consistent so that there will only be signs telling you maybe you're going into a different subdivision. But everything else looks the same.
I see. So more uniformity, basically, in that same development, and that's what we're looking for, even though we have different developers there.
Yes. We want it all to look like it's in Sutter County.
I make a motion to accept.
Thank you. We already had a motion by Supervisor Baines and a second by Ziegemeyer. So we'll go ahead and proceed with the roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Thank you.
Eyes have it. Thank you, Neil. We'll move up into item number 23, follow-up reports and announcements. Start with CAO Steve Smith.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I just want to make sure, because I still see some in the audience that maybe wanted to speak about the item that we had pulled. Item number, what was it? The dog park? I'm sorry, not the dog park, but the gate opening? But everyone's --
Sure. We can allow that. We just need to, can you grab some yellow cards? Because we didn't have any yellow cards, Supervisor Ziegemeyer. That's why we didn't call them. Otherwise, everyone's welcome.
Okay.
Oh, okay. So we have some pink cards. So we can allow that. So let's do it. If you'd like to speak on the dog park, go ahead and call the speakers. Or, sorry, not the dog park. She, you confused me.
Sorry.
The pathway.
Pathway.
We have five public speakers. The first speaker is Michael Stevenson.
I'll just before, because I know we have five speakers, I just want to remind you there's a three-minute limit, too, for the speaking. And then also, we don't respond to the public comment. Okay. I came here because I wanted to, I was under the impression that there was going to be a vote about this and about the closing of the public committee between South Barrett and Glendale. I live on South Barrett Road. I use that pathway every week, sometimes multiple times a week. And so does my family. My mom uses it all the time. That's how we get around. Without that, we would be stuck using either Lincoln, which is more dangerous and a little out of our way because it's a busier road, or, actually, that's it. That's the only option we have. Or we have to take a car, which is traffic, and that's, and gas prices are high these days. And it's, I understand the concerns about it. I'm not trying to say it's not a real concern, but it's definitely not only used for bad. It's used for a lot of good. And I'm one of the people who uses it, and I just wanted to urge you not to close it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Our next public speaker is Kathy Goman.
I live on the South Barrett side. It is definitely convenient to get from South Barrett over to Glenwood and Richland Road. If you can't go through there, you have the option of going down, walking down Highway 99. So from a public safety standpoint, that doesn't seem like a very good option. It's well-kept. I have photos on my phone if anybody's interested to see whether this is a dark alley or a well-kept green space. I've seen school kids walking down there and using that access. Maybe once a month, I've seen someone who looks like they might be homeless or a transient walk down my street, which is the main way into that walkway. So it's not, to my observations, it's not very important. And if you close it off, the mischief makers will climb the fence or cut the wire or whatever, and you will have more of a problem than you have by having it be open to the public. So that's my opinion, that it's very convenient for those of us who live in the area. And I, speaking to neighbors, have not heard of very many incidents of having a problem. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Our next public speaker is Jolene Williams.
Thank you. Hi. I have lived next to the pathway linking Glenwood Drive and South South Barrett Road since 1983. I am opposed to closing the pathway. This pathway is main, I'm sorry that I'm reading. Forgive me for doing that. This pathway is maintained by both the neighbors and myself, both properties adjoining the pathway, or by our yard services. Occasionally, a county maintenance employee stops by for a look, maybe does something. The guardrails, which were established at each end of the pathway, have discouraged the use of most motor-type vehicles or speeding bicycles. I wish to see them stay in place. The people that use the pathway are mainly decent, law-abiding citizens, walkers, neighbors, schoolchildren. If the Board of Supervisors decides to close the pathway, it will then be up to the county to maintain the site on a regular basis, providing continual and proper upkeep. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Also, my next-door neighbor had to go to the airport to pick someone from out of town up, and she isn't here. Coral Pasalia, may I read her statement as well?
You have some remaining time. Does she have remaining time?
Yes. I'll read it. I'll do my best then. I have lived in my home located at 700 Glenwood Drive, next to the bike path since 1978. The bike path has been used consistently by walkers, bikers, students, joggers, and on. Occasionally, a vandal comes by that affected one or two of our residents on the street, including myself, in the last 45 years or so. Together, my neighbor and I have maintained this area since we moved into our houses in the late '70s. After several years of maintaining, we did request that Public Works maintain the area. We were sure that the county would do their part. They made approximately three visits with Sutter County inmates who picked up trash and swept. Public Works assistance was very short-lived and inconsistent. Since that time, we have paid our yard services for many years to maintain the property so that it is not detract from our properties. I even proposed to purchase the pathway, but was told that I couldn't do that due to a utility easement. So yes, there have been lots of challenges.
I'm going to have to ask you to finish up. Sorry, the time just ran.
All right. Well, okay.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Lloyd Leighton.
I think he did, yeah.
Our next public speaker is Claudia.
My name's Claudia, and I live on Glenwood. I have two little boys. And since we've been on Glenwood Drive, we have had many concerns. So thank you to the supervisors for your time. I'm here to encourage the supervisors to approve the recommendations set forth by Mr. Neil Hay to restrict access and close it. This is a tiny cul-de-sac of just nine homes in the Hillcrest area, and most cul-de-sacs do not have two exits. This cul-de-sac does due to the easement. Our cul-de-sac has experienced break-ins, burglaries, vandalism, speeding motorcycles while my kids are playing basketball outside or riding their bikes, zooming through, using the walkway while my children play, ride their bikes, or shoot hoops. We've noticed a significant increase of transients walking through our cul-de-sac, dozens and dozens daily, often leaving shopping carts that was left many times where we had to dispose of it, my neighbors and I, dumping trash, drug paraphernalia, needles left to be disposed of. I have seen teenagers engaging in sexual activity there in the dark. My neighbors have experienced stolen mail, break-ins to their vehicles. My neighbor Charlene, she's a schoolteacher. She can't be here because she's in a meeting. Her Highlander has been broken into three times. My husband's work truck sits in our driveway, and he has toolboxes. Those have been rifled through. They are locked and guarded, so they can't get into them. But we have camera footage of them rifling through them, and we see them coming and going right through the alleyway. We've observed drug use, illegal dumping of vehicles. There was, on one occasion, a high-speed chase that resulted in the getaway vehicle being deserted right there at the alley, at the end of our cul-de-sac. And the perps just ran through the walkway to get away. And after every reported event, the Sutter County Sheriff deputies have come to our house to take the reports, and they have given us the same suggestion. They've said, "That alley is your problem. Get that closed," encouraging us to petition to have the walkway closed. They suggest it would lead to a significant decrease in crime. Mr. Neil Hay's department contacted the Sutter Sheriff's Office to confirm that there have been a lot of calls for service. So he was able to confirm that. That's in his report. Every officer that has taken a report regarding theft, burglary, and suspicious activity has stated that the easement is a problem. Closing it would result in a decrease in activities and calls to the Sheriff Department and their resources. Personally, our home was burglarized. $4,000 were taken from our home in the early mornings last August. This was not a neighbor that did this. It wasn't any of the lovely people on the other side. They are wonderful. They're not the problem. It was someone that took the opportunity. The officer and the sheriff that showed up, he called it crime of opportunity and said, "It's that alley with easy access into our cul-de-sac and ease to exit." Research indicates that burglars seek locations where they can easily escape, seeking alleys specifically because they provide an easy way to escape and avoid being caught. This walkway provides both. We believe we're easy targets, sitting ducks, making our street and the surrounding areas vulnerable. So I walk daily. I exercise daily. I get that. It's wonderful to have a lovely place to walk. But I would also remind everyone that they have a really nice area to walk on their side. And another shortcut is Jones Road. Jones Road is really nice. It's over by the racket club. That's a perfect way to walk, too. I don't think that's more important than public safety because I know that's your guys' priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Our next public speaker is Shannon.
Good afternoon. My name is Shannon. I only have information to provide to you starting from May of last year. We had recently just had purchased the very last house on South Barrett Road, which, mind you, is a dead-end road that also has a big divot. Instead of a speed bump, it's one of the sinking ones. So for anyone who's going to come down there, they're going to have to deal with a lot of stuff because, A, I'm a nosy peeper, so I know every person who's walking by my house. And I will tell you, we have the same people who walk every single day. We do randomly get the free-range people, who some will call transients or not, but I will tell you, I've never found any garbage, any shopping carts, any anything on my house, which is literally the very first house that you come out to on South Barrett Road. I love this pathway. I use it every single day. And most of the people who I see here also use it every single day. Like I said, I don't see the transients who are coming to live inside this alleyway or whatever. It has a streetlight. It's well-lit. I will tell you now of a family of five who's now living in that very first home. I feel that we're providing most people from saying, "I don't need to be down there because people are going to come out. I have security cameras." Anytime a cop has a question, they can come and look on my rings that I have. I'm not going to say it's not ever going to happen because we obviously live in a world where people will do bad things. It's just what happens. However, our end of our street is not a very good escape route if you're going to live, if you're trying to flee. Okay? You're not going to be able to park your car there anymore because I'm pretty much aware of anyone who's parking there. If they're going to Jolene's house or if they're going to Mike's house, I know who's parking there. I know who's having a party. I know who's getting together. We live in a pretty good community. I will tell you, I know my neighbors. We are all frequent flyers of people who like to get out and walk. Like I said, there are so many couples who walk daily using that path, and a ton of high school students on a Wednesday getting home early. school students on a Wednesday getting home early from school. You will see a flock of students who use that to get home. So I can't give you too much history on it. I just know since I acquired the property in May, I saw that pathway and I, I mean, it was a huge selling point for me because me and my family, we do go on walks. Me, more specifically, just me and my husband go on walks. We enjoy it. It's our nightly routine. So it's, it's a good walking path for us. And we take it all the way down to Jones Road. And we do a huge loop. So it gives us a mile, a mile and a half track that we can walk, that we feel good about. So enough people in, in our neighborhood use it that I feel it's clean. It's, thank you. I'll stop, but thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
That was our last public speaker. We did receive three email comments in opposition to the item.
Okay, we'll take those on file and share those with the Board of Supervisors. And then at this time, I'm going to ask if Steve Smith has his comments.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. Just one thing I wanted to mention, our new Veteran Services Officer that serves both Yuba and Sutter Counties is here, Joel Seha. And he'll be back at a future meeting to give an update. Marvin King, longtime Veteran Services Officer, will be phasing out, I believe, towards the end of the fiscal year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, CAO Smith. And then we're going to move to Supervisor comments. I'm going to do something different this time. I'll start here in the middle. Usually, we start on either end, but we'll start here in the middle. Supervisor Baines?
Yes, thank you so much. I'd like to start off by, I guess, asking the county or if I could work with someone in staff to figure out where we could put a dog park in the county. All right, so, just a comment. And I'm going to actually have a couple requests for letters of sympathy and condolences to go out to the families of Jim Richmond and Chuck Papageorge.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Baines. Supervisor Boone?
Yes, actually, I've got a couple of items tonight, today. On February 19th, we met with Butte County Supervisors Conley and Kimmelshue to discuss the Orville Dam, DWR's pending license renewal with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, also known as FERC. Since 2006, DWR has operated the Orville Dam under annual extensions while objections from both Sutter and Butte Counties seeking accountability for our damages, flood protection, and levee fortification caused remain unanswered. After 18 years of this inaction, FERC must properly address these concerns. Today, I'm seeking the Board consensus on the following matters to ensure Sutter County's interests are protected. One, that we direct staff to provide monthly reports to the Board of Supervisors on the status of the FERC project. Two, that we agree to work collaborative with Butte County to force FERC to address our concerns. And three, that we direct staff to contact the attorney who filed the first objection on our behalf and ask that he come to a future board meeting to provide a status on that matter. And then we've got, fourth, and last, we, we want to direct the staff to contact an expert who worked with Butte County to calculate the damages and bring our agreement back to the Board so we can hire that individual to prepare our similar calculation for Sutter County. I've got, I've got a couple of more. I'll continue. The next round, we've got the City of Robbins. On February 5th, we arranged a meeting with county staff with USDA Rural Development to discuss grant opportunities that were available to Sutter County. On such opportunity involved a waste treatment facility in Robbins, which could provide funding for the significant improvements to their facility. I'm seeking a consensus from the Board to direct staff to work with the USDA to pursue funding opportunities for the Robbins wastewater facility improvements. So I'm seeking Board consensus on the following matters, that we direct staff to provide a monthly report to Board of Supervisors on this status of the Robbins wastewater project. And last but not least, a PIO. Finally, I strongly believe that we must fill the vacant Public Information Officer position. This position is critical in maintaining our transparency, keeping the public informed about the progresses that we have, our initiatives, and our projects that our supervisors and support staff are working on to protect and enhance the quality of life in Sutter County. Therefore, I seek the Board consensus to direct staff to bring forward an item to unfreeze the PIO role and higher. And that's it.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Boone. Just make, we want to make sure to provide, you asked for quite a bit, we want to make sure to provide all that to the staff, right? That you, that you prepared, if you haven't already.
I, I haven't done that, but I just, I just made the announcement.
Okay, Supervisor Baines, did you have another comment?
Actually, I'd like to, in addition to the letters of sympathy and condolences going out to the families, I'd request the Board and staff to maybe consider doing something, whether it's out at the museum for both Jim Richmond and Chuck Papageorge. Jim served Franklin Elementary School for a number of years, Sutter County Board of Education for several terms. And Chuck Papageorge was, I think, three-time mayor for the city, Uta City. So I think it's an appropriate request.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Baines. Appreciate that. And we'll go here, actually, we'll move to Supervisor Stevens.
Okay, a couple things. One is the audience out there about South Barrett. This is in my district and I'm going to be coming out, talking to neighbors. Supervisor Flores said he would attend with me also if I wanted him to, but just reaching out to the community and seeing where everybody feels like they are with this item. And the other one, I'm requesting a letter of support for the off, off-the-leash dog park. So if the supervisors would consider that.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Stevens. Supervisor Zigamire?
Okay, so first of all, I want to, Don Cochran passed away.
Don Cochran.
Yeah, great guy, awesome guy. Gosh, I think he was 92 years old, so he's going to be missed. A couple things, so I'd like staff to work on. First of all, I want to, want to direct staff to come back with the, to the Board with a recommendation that would do away with provisional raises for all elected. And then come back with recommendation to establish a community ad hoc group that establish what they would recommend for raises for electeds. It's going to be the fairest way, in my opinion. Second, third of all, lot of great sports out there still. It's playoff basketball still, so get out there and root for your high school teams. It's travel volleyball season still and travel basketball season still and baseball season. So get out there, a lot of great sports going on. And so just get out there. And, you know what? I never think my wife in the speech I was talking about earlier, because none of us could do this without our wives and our family's support. I mean, I'm serious. They put up with a lot, a lot. And I love my wife and family to death. They have to bear the brunt of everything. We don't have a PIO. We don't have an assistant. We had all those things, but we cut them, so we do all those as well. We wear the economic development hat and, like I said, it puts a lot of stress on our, on our families. And I'm lucky, we're all lucky to have the amazing wives and families that we have that support us in our roles. But thank you. I hope you all have a great week and be safe.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Zigamire. I'd like to add that we close in memory of Octavio Landa, who's the founder of Landa Glass, who passed away last week. If we can please close in his memory. And also announcement, we have the, we're all participating, I believe, in the Baka'i Parade that is this weekend, Saturday at 10 o'clock. So hopefully, you all can come out and join us in a parade. So are there any other comments?
I got, through the chair, I got one more comment. Can I please be added to Jim Richmond's? I met Jim when I was, I think I was 19 years old and met Jim. And, gosh, man, that guy was hilarious, just awesome to be around with. He was funny. He was a friend to everyone, would make you laugh, had great jokes, funny, corny jokes, but he was funny. I, I personally never seen him get upset, all right? I always seen him, he could always laugh stuff off and just very easygoing, but always...
Yes, you will be added. Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. We'll vote right after. Did you need, make a comment?
I wanted to ensure the direction to staff that was given by supervisors, is that being included in this vote to approve?
It is, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. And just, yeah, so that is being included. So we understand that? Okay, great. So we had a motion and a second?
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Zigamire?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Hey.
He said he wants a freezer.
He needs one freezer.
No.
He needs a freezer.